All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special town hall to discuss the feasibility of a zoo in Elk Grove. I'm Christopher Jordan. I'm the Director of Strategic Planning and Innovation for the city, and I'll be facilitating this meeting this evening. Before we get going, a couple of housekeeping items for you. First, we are recording this event. We will be loading it to the city website in the coming days, once we get it processed and loaded. So look forward to that. There'll be an email announcement to follow. But in the meantime, the materials from tonight will also be posted later this evening, so you can feel free to take a look at those after the event. We have disabled video and audio for our participants this evening, so that you can focus on the presentation. But we are welcoming questions throughout the evening, so please use the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen to type in your questions. And at the end of the presentation, our team will be able to go through those and provide responses to you. So we'll go ahead and get started on the agenda. I'm joined this evening by our City Manager, Jason Bearman, along with Darryl Doan, the Economic Development Director. From the Sacramento Zoological Society, we have Jason Jacobs, the Executive Director, and from Relevant Strategies and Solutions, Rick Biddle. The agenda for this evening has a lot going on. We'll be starting with an introduction to the project, presenting the findings from the feasibility study, discussing the economic opportunity and potential financing options, and then identifying next steps in the process. At the end again, we'll be answering questions that you have. Our intent this evening is to conclude the event at about eight o'clock, being respectful for your time and that of our panelists. But before we begin, a word from our Mayor, Bobby Singh Allen.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for tonight's town hall. I am Elk Grove Mayor Bobby Singh Allen, and this is my good friend Mo. He is an example of why we are here tonight, to learn about some important information regarding the Sacramento Zoo. Sacramento Zoo is almost 100 years old. At 14.7 acres, it is simply too small to properly serve the animals like Mo under their care. The zoo's accreditation is at risk if things remain the way they are. That's why the Sacramento Zoological Society reached out to the city last summer about working together to better serve these great animals. Tonight's meeting is the start of a larger community conversation on whether a new zoo makes sense for Elk Grove. Our discussions will have the benefit of analysis from a draft study to support open, honest, and authentic conversations. Moving forward, tonight's meeting is a chance for staff and consultants to share information, take questions, and get the community's reaction. Your feedback is wanted and needed throughout this process. Following this meeting, there will be a chance for all of us to thoroughly review the study, submit additional questions and comments, and prepare for more public discussions when this is presented to the City Council at our March meeting on the 23rd. The goal of this council is always to do what is right and what is in the best interest of our community and our partners. The Sacramento Zoo is a regional destination, attracting half a million guests from Northern California and Western Nevada every year. Wherever the zoo is located, it will create a memorable wildlife, educational, and family-friendly experience for the entire region. I want to thank the zoo, city staff, and the consultants who work so hard to prepare the information and the materials you will see this evening. So without further delay, let's hear more about this great project and our team. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jason Jacobs to introduce the zoo and the Sacramento Zoological Society and some of the broad objectives of the project. Jason?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. You know, the Sacramento Zoo, as we go to the first slide, is going to be 100 years old in 2027. It started on 4.2 acres, and it has expanded to 14.7 acres. And you can see the stats of the animals that we have. It's been operated and managed by the Sacramento Zoological Society since 1997 as a nonprofit organization. And despite the challenges, which you'll talk, which we'll see on the next slide, having no parking lot in a small campus, we are the most attended cultural venue in the region with over half a million visitors a year, if we want to go to the next slide. So expansion or relocation has been studied multiple times for several decades, several initiatives to look at various sites within the region. And it has been determined that expansion is not viable within land parks, not only due to the need of the space for which animals require, but also that there is no parking. We accomplish over half a million visitors a year without a parking lot. And most recently, there was a 2019 relocation, relocation viability study, and the results of that study determined that there were no sites available within the city of Sacramento for the zoo's needs. Now, a new zoo is vital because the current site at 14.7 acres just does not have the space to meet the ever-evolving standards of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums' Accreditation Guidelines. Over the past 30 years, the zoo has taken proactive measures by sending away popular iconic species such as tigers, hippopotamus, bears, and gorillas. And in cases of some of these animals like tiger, yes, they are popular and iconic, but zoos have a vital role to play in the conservation of rare endangered species. And the site here does not allow us to provide enough space for these animals and to properly serve this entire region. We go to the next slide, please. Zoos matter for these three purposes: conservation, to take care of animals in the wild, to educate people about them, and to serve as, to serve as breeding programs for zoos, building capacity of rare and endangered species, just like we do at the Sacramento Zoo with a thick-billed parrot. We have the largest population under human care, a critically endangered species. Education, because the majority of people who visit zoos will never have the opportunity to go to Africa on safari, or let alone maybe even see a grizzly bear within our own country. And the, just the virtue of having a zoo is an enormous education program. More people visit zoos each year in the United States than all professional sporting events combined, and that dovetails directly into recreation, that we provide safe, family memories where people can go around and have unique experiences. So next, we'll go into the presentation of the feasibility study, the next slide, and the executive summary. And I'm going to hand off the executive summary really quickly for the next slide to Rick Biddle from Realistic Strategies and Solutions.
Thanks, Jason. What you'll see in the feasibility study, we're going to go through a couple of key slides. It talks about the vision and the impacts of the feasibility study. It's really hard to condense a 55-page feasibility study that you all have an opportunity to see on the website later tonight and through the coming days. We hope you take the time to look at it, but it is a lot of detail. There's a lot of information contained in that feasibility study. And tonight, we just wanted to share with you the highlights and the high-level outcomes of that feasibility study. I think, again, what this presents, from our viewpoint and having worked with zoos throughout the United States and throughout the world, it's really an extraordinary, truly extraordinary opportunity, not only for the Elk Grove community, but for the animals that are within the zoo. And so, again, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The last time that a zoo moved was in 1988, so it's been almost 40 years since a zoo has moved, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this community. But Jason, you want to just talk about the key priorities?
Yes, the next slide is the vision slide, and you'll see several, well, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll talk about the key priorities as we move forward. That's all right. In the vision, well, best practice in animal care, conservation, incredible visitor experience, and world-class thinking. Zoos are much different today than they were 30, 40 years ago. We don't want to create a zoo with row after row of pens for hoofed animals, or a row of monkey cages, right? Or a row of concrete grottos for big cats and other carnivores. The zoo of the future and the best zoos of today are a series of impactful experiences of presenting animals in naturalistic homes that educate, inspire our guests to take action for wildlife and make a difference for conservation. And that's what you will see as we talk about some of the highlights that we're looking at for the new zoo. So the next slide just talks about vision really quick, and you can see these words that we've underlined. We want to make this the best zoo in Northern California, one of the best zoos in North America, but definitely one that resonates with the natural wildlife here in this region and takes our guests from all over this region on a safari around the world and creates some compelling experiences that show them how to make a difference for wildlife and lets them see animals in a much different way than the traditional zoo. So with that, we're going to show you some of the highlights at what we're looking for potentially in Phase One. And the first slide, of course, is a entry complex. And if any of you have been to the entry complex at the current zoo, it is not built for a quarter, it is not built for a half a million visitors. So we're looking at an entry complex that will be built to host over a million visitors a year. And there will be some animal exhibits near it, habitats for species such as alligator, potentially giant tortoise, flamingos. And just a little note about the animals I talked about. The study and the highlights you're going to see tonight are just highlighting potential species. It is by no means a complete list of all the species that would be in the first phase. That has yet to be determined yet, but you're going to see some of the species that we think are vital to create those great experiences that have a conservation value and that we can provide an incredible home for. So this new entrance will be where you start your safari. And once you get your ticket, you could sign up for a special tour or all the other amenities which you're going to see as we move through the zoo into the first phase, which is the next slide. The majority of the first phase focuses on African wildlife, and there are many zoos throughout the world that have great African savanna exhibits. The difference with what we are planning is that we want to be a zoo of the future, which is carrying capacity and increasingly large numbers of populations of animals. And what's going to make this different is that we are going to program this savanna like no other zoo with incredible opportunities for visitors both day and night. So you could see some of the potential animals that are on the savanna are the hoofed animals like rhino and giraffe. But we're also, in the next slide, going to feature in their own areas, for safety's sake, some of the predators like lion, meerkat, cheetah, and African wild dog. Cheetah and African wild dog face a myriad of threats in the wild. Sacramento region has the right climate. We're in the right climate to create a breeding program and to participate in the conservation of these species. And something I need to mention, too, as we talk about these animals, is that we do not bring animals in from the wild. All the animals we are talking about for the new zoo, we would work with other accredited institutions so that these animals were born in other zoos, and they would be part of international managed programs. So in addition to the carnivores, on the next slide, you would see many different species of hoofed animals such as zebras, rhinoceroses, giraffes, potentially gazelles, antelopes, and animals like rhinos, for instance, are another animal that needs a lot of help. Rhinoceroses in Africa are being poached for their horn. The poaching rates have skyrocketed in the last several years, and this region provides the perfect climate. And as we talk about our partners in science later on, incredible resources to house a herd of rhinoceroses and really make a difference for a species that needs a lot of help. So by comparison, our giraffes right now have about a 13,000-square-foot corral. With this, we're looking at increasing their space by at least tenfold. So you would see large herds of African grazing animals in large paddocks, similar to like what you would experience on safari. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about the different experiences around that savanna. So the first one on the next slide is an overnight tented safari, and scouting groups could use this, corporate retreat groups. This really sets this zoo apart from other public zoos throughout this region, in that you could spend the night, you could have a whole day experience at the zoo, and you're waking up in the morning with your hot cocoa or coffee as you're watching the giraffes and zebras gamble across the savanna, and you hear the lions roar, and it's the closest you can get to Africa without having to get on a flight that takes you about 24 hours to get there. In the next slide, we plan on having animal encounters in Africa. We have a giraffe feeding experience at the current zoo. Just because the giraffes are in a larger habitat, we will have ways to get them to the, closer to the guests, and we'll be able to continue having giraffe feeding interactions. But the larger facility will enable us to do more and house a larger herd. We're also looking at doing a public feeding opportunity for white rhinos. As someone who has worked with white rhinos in the past, although they have this, a cantankerous reputation in the wild, in zoos, they become quite docile, and we can safely do this type of impactful experience by allowing people to feed these animals just as we do with the giraffes. And that's a memory that anyone will remember. The next slide features the safari lodge, which will be part, most likely, of the entry complex, where you can come in and have lunch or dinner. You could have a private event here. It will be capable of hosting hundreds of people at one time for a private event at night, or it might be a restaurant at night, where you can overlook the savanna, just like you would if you were going on safari, and you can watch animals coming towards the water hole. You'll be able to see the lions because they're active at night, and really create a unique dining experience that is comparable to when you stay at a lodge in Africa. Now, I'm going to talk about some of the unique animals that will be in their own habitats in the first phase, what we're looking at, and one of those is the okapi. Many of you who are regular visitors to the Sacramento Zoo know that we brought okapi in in 2019. They're the first okapi to live in Northern California in over 45 years, and they are actually the closest relative of the giraffe. This is what the mayor was working with in her video. That was Mo, our okapi, one of our two okapi's. And we are a leader in okapi husbandry. We have zoos coming from all over the nation to look at our okapi habitat that we built, and we want to make sure we keep supporting this animal by caring for them at the new zoo, as well as our work that we contribute to the okapi conservation group. These animals are only found in the Democratic Republic of Congo. They're very rare. They're almost impossible to view in the wild, and we do a really great job with this species, and we want to make sure they're part of the new zoo experience. Another animal in the next slide that we're looking at bringing back would be the hippopotamus. Sacramento Zoo had hippopotamus for over 40 years. They were kept in a, in a very small little concrete pool, and when the last animal passed away due to old age, there is just not the space to do them justice at the current site. The hippopotamus means river horse, and we are a region surrounded by rivers and freshwater horses. And this would be a key habitat to talk about comparing animals that live in African rivers to animals that live in the rivers and deltas around this region. We would want to be water-conscious and conserve water by building a habitat that we could filter the water and recycle and reutilize it. And viewing these massive animals underwater is a treat. There's several zoo habitats that have been built like this throughout the United States, and every day we have guests ask us about the hippos. They miss them, and the river horse for a region surrounded by rivers makes sense. One of the other unique animals that we hope to bring to the Sacramento Zoo is the gelada. It's one of the largest species of monkey. Geladas are only found in the Highlands of Ethiopia, and there's only two zoos in the United States that work with this species, San Diego and the Bronx. They are extremely social, and they are actually grassland monkeys. They live in cliffs, but they're not animals that you'll find climbing in trees. There's really not a lot of trees where they live, but they experience extreme temperature differences every day of their lives, where it's near freezing at night and blazing hot during the day. And for a new zoo site with grassy areas, this would be an incredible species for us to add. It has a unique story. It's very social, so we could house a large troop, and we think this could be a crowd pleaser. And it's potentially, we can mix it with other animals like the ivex, which you see to the left. And speaking of primates, the next part slide is a primate playground. We know what the current zoo, our little playground, is one of the most popular amenities to our smaller visitors, and it's popular with the parents, too, because they can sit down and relax while kids burn off that energy. Well, we want to make the best playground in the region right in Elk Grove, and we want to make a playground that people, the kids, can learn about locomotion, how primates move, how we move. Because primates, there's animals like the squirrel monkey, which is called a tree runner. There's certain species of lemurs, which are vertical cleaners and leapers, leapers. And there's gibbons, which use arm-over-arm movement called brachiation, and we want to encourage kids to exercise. We want them to learn about locomotion skills. We want them to get up and moving and learning about primate. So this playground complex would be the center of several primate habitats for animals like lemurs and squirrel monkeys, and potentially some other animals we might throw in there like a sloth or a capybara, talking about animal locomotion, and of course, some nice benches for the parents to relax, have a drink, and enjoy their day. The last part of what we're looking at for a first phase is one of the most important, and that is a veterinary hospital. The Sacramento Zoo has a partnership with UC Davis that dates back over 50 years. UC Davis is the top-ranked veterinary school in the world, and the program with Sacramento Zoo has trained more zoo and aquarium veterinarians than any other program in the world. Every UC Davis veterinary student goes through a two-week rotation at the Sacramento Zoo. We also have a full-time resident from UC Davis. Like the current zoo, the new vet hospital, we assume, would have windows where you could watch animals who are undergoing surgery or a checkup. But most importantly, it would expand the program and partnership that we currently have with UC Davis. A lot of people don't realize that with a program like the Gorilla Doctors, which takes care of wild gorillas in Africa, a lot of those veterinarians got their start taking care of gorillas and other apes in zoos. So the research that zoo veterinarians compile when they work in zoos with programs and partnerships like we have with UC Davis directly affects animals and helps save animals in the wild. So we're very excited about the first phase and what it could entail. We also have several second-phase projects that we're looking at. The first, we're, we're, one of the ones we're going to highlight in the next slide is California, and it would feature homes so that we can rescue animals like bald eagles and grizzly bears. Every year, zoos in the United States get requests from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to provide permanent homes for rescue animals like bears that come into too close of contact with people and bald eagles that are non-releasable. We would love to provide a home for that. We would also highlight other animals of the region like river otters, elk, trout, sturgeon, rattlesnakes. We would feature our Western Pond Turtle and Giant Garter Snake Conservation Program, really focusing not just on the big animals like grizzly bear, but some of the microfauna of our region and tying it in so that you get to see animals that live in freshwater regions in Africa and freshwater regions right here at home in California to make a direct conservation impact for head start programs in our region. Another Phase Two project on the next slide would be Asia, and there potentially you could see orangutans. I say potential because we don't know yet. You'll see in the overhead diagram, there's other spaces for apes in the plan, but it would herald the return of tigers, a species that is facing a lot of challenges in the wild, and other species in Asia like red pandas, perhaps leopards, or the hornbills like you see. So a lot of potentials for Asia. And finally, the final slide talking about phases would be Australia, where you could have a walk-through yard, just like you're going in on Australia walk, walkabouts into the outback, where you're surrounded by kangaroos and emus, and separate habitats for more dangerous birds like the double-waddled cassowary, which you see. Perhaps an interactive aviary for lorikeets and other Australian birds we could have on display like palm cockatoos, kukaburras. There's a lot of wildlife from Down Under that we would love to highlight. So as you can see, there's something for everyone at the new zoo. This is by no means a complete species list that we will determine as we move further down the process, hopefully. So thank you.
So I think I'll jump in here just for a second, and this image is a site plan of the proposed site. And I think, well, Jason and CJ will also jump in, and, but it's, as Jason just indicated, the proposed feasibility study looks at two phases of development. And if you look at the image to the right, we're actually building the site from the south, which is the purple, small purple diagram at the, the bottom, with the entry and the parking, and developing the site to the north, so that the first phase includes the parking, the entry, and as Jason described, the bigger Africa. described, the bigger Africa along with support facilities. And you can see that there's along the edge of Lots Parkway, there's a green buffer area that would be set aside that would give us, give an area that buffer the area from the adjacent homes into the zoo. The second phase that Jason indicated, talked about is at the top, the upper right-hand portion. And the nice part about phase two is that it's actually modular pieces. So in theory, you, there's four main areas that are indicated there. They could actually be built in, in a separate exhibit. So you could build the great apes as a standalone. You could build Asia as a standalone, Australia, and then California. So we haven't figured out the sequence of phase two just yet. But though, the, the concept is to develop it from the, the south to the north with the ability to work out the site as you're implementing the various phases. CJ, do you want to talk about the overall site and its location within the city?
Sure. Thanks, Rick. So the site that we're looking at as part of the study is a approximately hundred acre property off of Camera Road, just west of Highway ninety-nine. We are not looking at developing the entire hundred acres, and Rick can talk more to logistics of that in a moment. But instead, the site would have about sixty acres of habitat and support area with an additional ten acres of parking. So for a total of seventy acres. What we're planning for, what we're studying at this point, is that the site would be developed a little bit north off of Camera. This allows for development of the surrounding land uses and some major land use planning that we're going through right now for the broader area to really be realized as a more urban framework of street grids and neighborhoods. So bringing in a little bit gives the opportunity for the traffic circulation to be programmed well and to allow for those movements to be successful. We're thinking at this point that primary entrance, the parking lot, would likely be off of Classical Way, which is an extension of an existing street that's developed right now on the east side of Lots Parkway. From there, you'd be able to go into the entry complex and then through the balance of the site. As Rick mentioned, there is a buffer area that we're starting to study and consider that would be along the Lots Parkway edge as an opportunity to buffer the use and the activities from the residential uses that surround it. And then to a north end, there is a drainage channel, drainage shed that is historical in nature. It's been there for many years as part of the farming operations. It's currently in construction for, for new design and more of the, the context and character of the area and to provide for flood and storm drainage control. So this would buffer right up against that. There's designs in place today for trails on both sides of that channel. So it's opportunities to integrate those trails into the overall project. So things we'll be considering. We haven't worked out all the details. Obviously, there's a lot still to go into. And we'll show you on the next slide, just in thinking about those slides that Jason presented a moment ago, and the various species that could potentially be in Africa. There's a lot working in that thirty-one acre block. So still a lot of details to work out. And as we think about things like the traffic operations, noise, odor, and other areas, other topic areas, those are things we'll get into in the environmental review if we move to that step, and things that we'll need to work through in the planning phase of the project to identify how we're able to address those. So Rick or Jason, if there's anything else in terms of the layout, again, we're highlighting on this slide, just some of those species that could be included in the Africa. And then we can jump to the next slide.
Yeah, I, I think CJ, the only other thing I'd add is that today, it's a, it's a flat piece of land, undeveloped piece of land. And as you, as we envision collectively envisioned the, the new zoo in Elk Grove, and as it builds out over time, it really becomes an urban zoo. Because in, in part, because it's the community is going to build up around it, which is very, very exciting. I mean, for the community, some great zoos around this country that have, there are urban zoos surrounded by their communities. And for the community to have access to their zoo, as Jason indicated, by coming to the zoo to have a, you know, an evening dinner at the zoo, just by, you don't even have to go into the zoo. You can come to the restaurant and look out over the watering hole, look out over the lines. It's a very cool community engagement. There's a number of, of activities and programs, benefits that can be programmed into the new zoo for the community to access both day and night. So I think CJ, that was the phase two, it's just like phase one, we just highlighted some of the animals over there. So I, I wanted to take a moment just to capture the key capital investments that, you know, what it costs to build out the vision, the animals, the phases that you saw Jason talk about. And again, in the report, you'll see there's lots of detail around these numbers. One has to remember that the feasibility study does not include design. We haven't designed an exhibit. This is built off of the vision. This is built off of, of what Jason described earlier, is innovative, unique opportunity for the Elk Grove community. And what we see in phase one is a, an investment somewhere between a hundred and forty-two million to two hundred and five million dollars, as we've defined as midpoint of a hundred and seventy-four million dollars. We use, the way that we've created this without design is that for each of the exhibits that Jason went through, he, we went through a best practices and developed the order, rough order of magnitude for exhibits that have been recently constructed throughout the country. And we looked at those for fitting to the vision. We identified the costs that are associated with that. We adjusted the cost to current date to twenty-twenty-two numbers and then added a twenty percent factor for building in California, because there are additional costs to build in, particularly from a permitting side that a lot for in, in building in California that we need to account for. So that hundred and seventy-four million dollars represents in a California adjusted number to build phase one that Jason went through. As, again, as Jason talked about, phase one's forty-one acres. So total, you know, of the total seventy acres, forty, forty-one plus the ten will get built out. So fifty-one acres of the seventy total are included within phase one. Phase two, which that highlights a number of those exhibits that Jason talked about, is in a runs between a hundred and twenty-three million to a hundred and fifty-eight with a midpoint of a hundred and forty million dollars. Again, these are twenty-twenty-two numbers adjusted for California, based on the best practices, best models, benchmarks within our industry today. And again, you'll see that in the feasibility study for each of those core exhibits that were highlighted. There's a series of, of benchmarks, three for each of those exhibits that have been identified. I mean, you can, on the, so we did it on the, we looked at the capital investment required. We then looked at what the operating model that as you build out phase one and phase two. And as we looked at the feasibility, we see that we use the series of, of models that are based upon other zoos that have similar MSAs, similar visitation basis, and created a model that said with phase one, that we would look to attract approximately one point two million visitors. That first year is going to be higher than the initial, the initial five years because of the excitement that's created around the zoo. So there's, we anticipate that year one is the high, high year, and then it stabilizes in over the next four years between a million fifty and a million one, probably closer to the baseline year of operating year in and year out of a million, million one. Again, as Jason indicated, the zoo today in Land Park generates just under five hundred and fifty thousand visitors with no parking and on a fourteen point seven acre site. So much bigger footprint with the ability to park with some very cool compelling reasons to visit your zoo. So we're very confident in looking at the models that are out there with a baseline number of one point one million, the opening year of about one point two million. Again, all-in visitors, both general, general visitors as well as members and, and school groups involved too. Some of the key findings that we were programmed into the operating model, the first one's a significant one, is that there's no requirement on the Sea of Elk Grove to support the zoo on an operating, annual operating basis. So that's a key element of the pro forma model that's been created. As I indicated, that the projections primarily on the attendance are based on MSA, several MSA communities with zoos, so are able to, to look at that. We anticipate and are programmed into the model that Elk Grove residents would receive a discount on membership fees to it. Instead of having discounts at the general admission level, it would be on the membership fees because it is your zoo. We expect you to come back to your zoo, hopefully many times throughout the year to see a number of special exhibits and new exhibits. And so we felt that was really important to discount membership fees to the Elk Grove community. In addition, I talked about this earlier, was that there's a number of, I think, special benefits, special evenings, special events that can be programmed into the zoo for the community to participate and to really enjoy their zoo in a very special way. A couple of the other key elements, the, the model is programmed to have approximately a hundred and seven, hundred and ninety-seven FTEs, full-time equivalent employees, compared to today's number at the, at the Land Park is eighty-six FTEs. So significant increase number of employees working at the zoo, primarily due to the size, the increase in size, the increase in the collection. But there are in the operational side and the animal, in the animal management side, primarily of those significant increases from eighty-six to one ninety-seven. And then lastly, we anticipate this, as Jason indicated, this continued partnership with UC Davis Veterinary School, not only helping to support the capital development of the state-of-the-art animal hospital, but also to provide that veterinary care in maintaining the animal collection that's there. So overall, we find, we see our projections as being conservative in moving forward over the next, over the initial five years, both from a standpoint of revenues, operating revenues in terms of attendance, and then how we've created the, the operating expenses. I think that's the last one.
So thanks, Rick. So now we're going to turn to Darryl Don, our Economic Development Director, who's going to walk through some economic analysis on the project. Darryl?
Good evening, everybody. As CJ said, I'm Darryl Don, your Economic Development Director. I have my camera on, but I can't tell if you can see me, so I will assume you can. There's a lot of benefits to a zoo or a project of this size and scope. And one of the questions we all need to answer is, is why a zoo in Elk Grove? And there are many answers to that. And one of the most important answers is because of the significant economic impact benefits, or economic development benefits of the project. Next slide. So we commissioned a study. It'll be made available later this evening when we post the feasibility study online. It was prepared by Applied Economics. They're one of the top economic analysis firms in the country. They're out of Phoenix. And the study, using what I think are still very conservative figures, shows some pretty impressive economic impacts. So total economic impact to the community over five years of two hundred and twenty-three million dollars. These are all just City of Elk Grove numbers. Certainly, there's an even larger impact when we factor in impacts to the entire region, but we're here to focus in Elk Grove tonight. As Rick just said, about a hundred and ninety-seven permanent jobs at the zoo, annual payrolls of twelve to thirteen million dollars, another seventy-five to eighty employees that are employed by the third-party concession operators at the zoo with another, with payrolls of almost three million. And then indirect jobs, so these are jobs that take place off-site of the zoo, but are created or maintained because of all of the economic activity at the zoo. So these are people going to the zoo to provide services, or people working at hotels or restaurants that are serving visitors to the zoo that are spending money in our community. So that's another hundred and thirty-eight jobs, and about six million dollars in payroll. If you add up all of those jobs, you've got nearly four hundred and fifteen annual jobs. Next slide. And then, like all projects, there are one-time construction impacts when facilities get built. And this is no different. This would be a significant construction project. And so the study estimates one-time construction impacts at about two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. And one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five total temporary construction jobs. That's another a hundred and eight million dollars in payrolls. And then, when visitors come to the zoo, they spend money. And so the study took a very conservative look at how many visitors would be in town and how many would be out of town. It estimates about roughly nineteen percent of visitors are coming from out of town and spending one day, possibly two, with a hotel night stay. And that generates significant tax revenue in the form of sales tax and what we call transit occupancy tax. That's the twelve percent charge on an Elk Grove hotel room night stay that comes to the city. So that all adds up to about two point six million dollars over five years, or roughly four hundred thousand a year. Next slide. So there are other, what I call intangible benefits, you know, benefits that you can't quantify with math. And they're no less important than the, than the tangible benefits that we can quantify. So certainly, bringing a facility like this to our community would have brand enhancement benefits. It would enhance our brand as a place to live, a place to do business, and a place to visit. And enhancing our brand as a place to visit and do business is what I do. And this project would certainly add a flag, if you will, for the type of community that we can become if we have these types of visitor and resident-serving amenities. And we're not a city, frankly, that has an appropriate amount of amenities that are family-focused, that are major amenities for a city of our size with our consumer demographics. So we need more of these types of facilities. And, and this could lead the way in attracting those things. Also, attraction of higher education institutions of the city, this is one of the key pillars of our economic development strategy. We have some great higher institution, higher education institutions in the city. But the ability to attract UC Davis through its veterinary partnership at the zoo to the city would be amazing. One of the best, some would argue the best veterinary school in the country, if not the world. And having them operating a facility with their students and their veterinarians working in Elk Grove would be a real win. And as I mentioned, increased and elevated entertainment and recreation amenities for our residents and visitors. I touched on that earlier, but it's, it's something that we need to grow. We don't want to be a city that has great consumer demographics and is a great place to live and where you can get your groceries, but there's nothing for our residents to do that's family-focused and safe and outdoors. And we have great parks, and we have great sports and athletics, but we don't really have something like this. And then enhanced and elevated architectural design, I'll combine the next two bullets, and innovative land use and sustainable planning and development. So as Rick touched on, and as Jason Jacobs touched on, this will be one of the most advanced, both technologically and from a design standpoint, zoos in the country. It'll be sustainable. It'll make good use of land in our city. And we will further our leadership in those areas. And then finally, as regional leadership, that's a key part of our economic development platform. And so with this zoo, we are able to step in as a city, as a community, and meet a critical need, I think, in the region, which is to keep this zoo thriving, to keep it open, and to give it the kind of home it deserves here in Elk Grove, and that will benefit the entire region. And I think that's the end of my part, Christopher. So back to you.
Thanks, Darryl. And actually, at this point, we're going to turn it over to Jason Bearman, City Manager, to talk about financing strategy. Jason?
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be with you. CJ mentioned Jason Bearman. Steve Elk Grove City Manager, my pleasure to be with you to talk a little bit about financing strategy. Watching some of the questions pop up, we're happy to get to those in just a few minutes. And I think one of those was about kind of the funding and the financing. How do we make this work? I think that's one of the, the key questions that we wanted to have answered, at least preliminarily, as part of this feasibility study. So I'm going to go through a few things with you, some of which is already touched on, but how we see this unfolding. And I think it's important to note that there's still a lot of questions that need answered. Those would be answered in the coming months. The City Council ultimately gives us direction to move forward with this. But this is kind of where we see things based on the feasibility analysis and the economic impact studies that have been commissioned and presented. And as was previously mentioned, this is a true public-private partnership. We can't do it on our own. The zoo can't do it on their own. This is a great opportunity to partner together to see if we can make this a reality. So the first big financing pieces to get to that hundred and seventy-four million dollar phase one project is private capital campaign, corporate sponsors, individual sponsors, naming rights, donors. The feasibility study estimates that that twenty-nine, fifty-nine million dollars is, is a reasonable estimate that could be achieved through a partnership between the Zoological Society and City of Elk Grove. And that leaves still a large number between a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and forty-five Between one hundred and forty five, one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and forty five million dollars in remaining construction costs. And so where's that money coming from? And again, one of the things I think it's important to note here is that, you know. We can't make this happen using existing city resources that are fundamental for existing city programs and services. We have a lot of priorities at City of Elk Grove, public safety, addressing some of our key concerns. And so the things I don't want to present to you tonight would not. Impact any of those core critical services that the City of Elk Grove is engaged in and maintaining that high quality of life that that we enjoy. These funding sources are above and beyond anything that we currently need for city operations. So starting with. Beyond the private donations and capital campaign would be revenue derived directly from. The activities of the zoo. So but for the zoo, these revenues would not be there. First and foremost is parking. An opportunity to charge for parking, which is common in zoos across the country that could generate significant cash flow on an annual basis. That could be used to fund portion of the construction of the of the zoo. In addition, as Darryl mentioned, there are economic impacts and economic and rev tax revenues generated from. The activity associated with the zoo, both directly at the zoo and in related businesses near the zoo. From sales tax and hotel tax and things that would not materialize but for the zoo itself. And other similar kinds of revenues. So we anticipate significant revenues coming into the city. Once the zoo is constructed, that could be used ultimately as well, a long term basis to fund and support the construction costs. And there's also one time capital construction funding. The city has set aside over a number of years for projects such as this in the cities too. Two of its. Capital reserves, one is our our capital reserve, the other ones are economic development incentive fund that could be utilized for a portion of the construction costs. And then finally, there are additional revenue sources that are not required for ongoing city operations. In fact, new revenue sources. Many of you are unfamiliar with the Sky River Casino that's currently under construction. The city has an MOU with the tribe that will allocate. Between four and four and a half million dollars annually to the City of Elk Grove. A portion of that is earmarked for important services like police services and roadway and so forth. But there is a large portion of that that is not, it is it is. Over and above anything that is required to mitigate the impact of the zoo. And so those funds could be allocated. Towards construction of the zoo at the city council, so chooses. So all total and all combined. We think there is a pathway forward to make the zoo a reality potentially. Again, a lot of work that needs to be done. To further refine costs, further develop revenue estimates. Christopher, if you want to go into the next slide. Again, these are rough order of magnitude costs. A lot of work needs to go through in developing the master plan, further refining those cost estimates. And then ultimately presenting a more detailed financial plan that will be working together with those costs. And those revenue sources working with the zoo to further define that. But based on the information that's presented to us right now through the feasibility study and the economic impact report and what we know today. We think there's a path forward that allow us to. To move forward with construction of of a zoo based on the information that we have today. But I want to make it clear that there were one of the questions, I think, in the in the Q and A was whether any decisions had been made regarding moving forward. And and the answer to that is no. This, we're very early in the process. We've, you know, engaged in this exclusive negotiating agreement, preparing this feasibility analysis. The city's in fact, under contract to purchase land for the site. So we're definitely are moving forward in that direction. But there are still a lot of things left to be done, including additional public outreach. We want to hear and gauge from the community. About priorities and impacts and what you all think about this this opportunity. We're going to talk in a few minutes a little bit more about next steps, once we get beyond that. But I think one of the purposes of the feasibility study was obviously to determine whether it is in fact at all feasible, whether there's a pathway forward in this. And I'm happy to report that there there is a pathway forward. There we see that this is potentially being feasible based on the information that we have to date. Christopher, if you could go to the next slide. Again, so based on the results of these studies, the zoo appear does appear to be financially feasible without diverting funds from other city priorities and services. And again, I can't emphasize that enough. We would not be recommending, we're talking about moving forward. If there wasn't a pathway without that that acknowledgement that we will not divert a funding from other critical priorities and services from our community. The other key thing that was touched on earlier is the fact that there is no ongoing city operating subsidy anticipated. Based on the information presented in the feasibility study. Again, we believe that is a critical component. One that that we were waiting to to learn about is through this analysis and study and the fact that. The experts, the consultants believe that based on modeling and information about this zoo and operations at other zoos. That it would be a self sustaining zoo, which is a critical component to the feasibility question of where we are. So that's, I think that's a summary of kind of where we are and what we see the financing looking like. Again, a lot of information still needs to be determined to get more into the details of that, but our broad brush stroke perspective, that's kind of what we see.
Great. Thanks, Jason. So now I think let's go through some of the next steps of what comes after tonight in the process. We've mentioned a little bit this evening, and you're probably aware that March twenty third is the next time our city council will meet, and we will have this as an agenda item for them. We'll be going through much the same information that you've seen this evening, so they can receive that and understand what is in the documents, what has been presented. At that point, the council will have some options. They will be able to possibly move the project forward into the next phase. Which would involve development of what we call a memorandum of understanding or MOU. And this would formalize that there is a partnership opportunity between the city and the Zoological Society to continue working on the project. At that point, we would begin work on a site master plan and formal master plan for the site, as well as a formal financing plan, as Jason mentioned a moment ago. Throughout this, and again, like Jason, I can't stress this enough, there will be continue to be opportunities for public input. On the zoo elements, the design features, as well as part of the financing plan itself. So look for that to move forward if the council so directs in the coming weeks. In parallel with that, we'll begin an environmental review of the project. This is, of course, required under state law, but also an important process to go through to understand the broader impacts from an environmental perspective of the project. I won't go through all the topics that will be included in the environmental review this evening, but some of the big ones, and we've heard these. To date from many of the comments and emails we've received on the project. Traffic, of course, is a big one. We are looking at placing this along the Camera Road corridor, which is slated as a major arterial along the within the city. It does have proximity to Highway ninety nine. Camera Road will ultimately be extended to I five. So there are a lot of great traffic opportunities, but we want to make sure to look at the broader and more immediate impacts of that traffic. Noise and odor are two other components that we'll be sure to look at as part of the process. Assuming all that comes out well, and we have a plan with a good financing strategy and the environmental review process complete. At that point, and if the council and the Zoological Society concur. We would move forward into essentially the construction process, and that would be memorialized through a memorandum of agreement. Which would lay out the roles and responsibilities for the construction and operation of the facility. So there are many milestones and processes to go through before this ever gets to a final decision. We have lots of other workshops and hearings that we'll be planning in the coming months, should this be moving forward. So that concludes the bulk of our presentation this evening. We're now going to move over into questions and answers. I see we've got a little over twenty questions at this point queuing up. We do have a couple that came in via email. Earlier this week from a couple of residents. So I'm going to start with those. I'll be reading the questions off and pitching them to members of our panel to address and answer your questions as best we can. As I mentioned, we're intent is to go until late this evening, but if we don't have a ton of questions, we'll certainly end early. And then opportunities to provide comments going forward. Again, we've mentioned that later this evening, we'll be posting the documents. And some other resource materials from this meeting to the website. And in the coming days, the video of this presentation will go up on the website as well. You can see the link on the screen there. If you're not familiar with it, please do check it out. So your opportunities to comment, certainly you can email us. There is a comment form or comment box at the bottom of the webpage. Feel free to use that to provide your comments. That emails the team and we're able to take a look at those. We'll do our best to respond where we can, but we'll certainly be sharing those, the content of those those questions overall and the character of them with the council. So I will go ahead and start. One of the first questions we got actually is around traffic. So what is the expected increase in traffic? Generated by the zoo as well as the nearby casino project? And can we expect a new on off frame to be built on Highway ninety nine in time to accommodate the increased traffic? I'll actually start with this one to sort of understand. The Camera Road Grant Line Interchange was reconstructed many years ago in anticipation of the regional mall going in. Obviously, the mall is not happening now, but it has a lot of capacity. At the crossing, it's set up as an eight lane facility, I believe, six day lane facility. So there's a lot of capacity there. We are studying the opportunity for a new interchange at White Lock Parkway where it deadens into Highway ninety nine. It would be a west side, a connection only. So if you're looking for more details on that project. Do encourage you to go to the city website. We've got a lot of resources up there as we're studying that. But we do think there's a lot of capacity there. We're going to study this, though, in more detail. Now that we have information from the feasibility study about the projected attendance figures and the employment characteristics, we can plug all that into a traffic model. And start to understand what the dynamics are on our local roadways. So look forward for that in a future phase. Of the work effort. The next question, will there be increased law enforcement to keep any bad actors out of our neighborhoods? Since so many people will be coming to the zoo and it is so close to residential areas. And I think Jason Bearman, this might be a great question for you to take stab or take a run at.
Sure. Yeah, one of the things we obviously want to analyze is is safety and impacts to our neighbors. So that'll be something we look at closely. We'll be partnering with our our police department and having conversation with other zoos and see what kind of impacts there might be. From our current conversations that we've had with other zoos and Sacramento Zoo. Hasn't been major issues that have been identified associated with that, but with any large development, any large facility. There are always going to be impacts. And we want to make sure that we carefully mitigate and consider. So rest assured, that will be part of the analysis to make sure. Those living adjacent to or neighboring do not feel that that impact. So that's what I can say at this point.
Thanks, Jason. The next question, are there plans to help mitigate the animal smells so neighbors won't suffer? And maybe Jason Jacobs, you can talk about zoo operations a little bit on that one.
Thank you. You know, we've been at the site for about ninety five years now, and we are in a highly residential neighborhood. There are no smells that come from the zoo. We've never had that challenger issue. And if this is designed right, that will not be a factor. There's many zoos that are located in urban areas.
Thank you. Next question is, I think again for you, Jason, is about the existing collection. Certainly not all of the hundred and eleven species that are at the existing zoo are featured in the Phase One. So what does that look like from a strategy and operation perspective?
So all of the animals that are currently at the zoo, those species that will not make it to the first phase, we would find. Good homes for in accredited institutions. And and that's what we would do. And eventually with patience and a full build out, you would have a complete zoological experience at this new site. But we would look at finding good homes in accredited facilities for them where they will receive just as great a care as they do now.
So I'm going to move now to the questions that we have up on the Q and A in Zoom. So the first question comes from Kenneth. And many people have actually given us a thumbs up. I think lots of folks are looking for this information. When are we hoping to have the zoo completed and open by? And possibly Jason Bearman, maybe that's a first question for you from a city process to tackle.
Sure. I guess what I could say is it's it's not going to be a. A quick process. It's going to take a while. And part of that is intentional. We want to make sure that we fully engage the community. We have a lot of opportunities for outreach and we do it right. We partner with our our friends at the zoo. We bring in the best in the business to help us design and and go through this process. And ultimately, it's going to take, you know, what it takes to do that, but it's it's gonna. There's going to have to be a little bit of patience as we work through the process. And, you know, there's a lot of kind of decision points along the way, a lot of milestones that need to be reached, a lot of. Decisions that the city council needs to make, the Zoological Society Board need to make, and rest assured, our commitment is to make sure we keep the community informed. And educated as we get further into design and some of those things, if if the council so chooses to move in that direction. Then we'll be providing constant updates on our website. We get a, we can get a kind of milestone schedule. Put together as we move forward into this process. That's something that we're going to continue to to look at. I couldn't really give you. A timeframe about how 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 much time it might take before we're able to kind of get to construction. But that's something we're going to be exploring over the coming months with approval of our city council is kind of looking at what that might take, how long it might take to make that happen.
Our next question comes from Rick Bellmore, and I'm going to paraphrase this a little bit, and I think maybe Rick Biddle is the best one to answer this one. His question is around opportunities for partnering with the zoo in the development and implementation or operation of. The zoo as a facility. So maybe, Rick, you can talk about that process from a design and operation standpoint.
Yeah, I think most successful zoos are built off of partnerships. Not only with its community, but as we know, we've talked with UC Davis as one example, but. You know, the devil will be in the details going forward, but again, the successful zoos are built off of partnerships. So I think we'll look to as we design and program the zoo to create as many partnerships with the community. Whether right partnerships or indirect benefits for the community. I think, again, I touched about on a number of benefits that can be offered to the community that in some way are a partnership. So I I think there's, the answer to it is there, it's fully embraced by the zoo. And I I think it's fully embraced and successful zoo models that are out there to continue to have these partnerships. So I think yes, and we'll stay tuned for more details.
And if someone were looking to engage in a conversation about those partnership opportunities, who should they reach out to?
I I think right now, like Jason has said, is that I think there will be that time. I think once we begin to program out in the coming months with the first phase of the facility master plan. I think we'll be able to identify those CJ and then begin to reach back out, just like, you know, this is not the the last conversation, it's the first conversation. So I think let us define those opportunities and then engage the community in various conversations around those. So I hate to be specific on any of those today, but just knowing that partnerships are a key component of the model going forward.
We have a comment on it. This is a great opportunity for Elk Grove. Thank you for that comment. So we're going to jump down here. Next question is, where can we find the detailed feasibility feasibility study? Again, that'll be posted to the website later this evening. So again, go to the website elkrovecity.org/zoo later tonight, and it will be there. So we'll jump down. Next question is about the acreage of the site. At fourteen acres, how does the existing zoo compare to other zoos? And I think we have a question later on, actually, about the sixty acres. About how that compares to other zoos. So maybe Rick again or Jason on that one.
I'll I'll take that. And you know, one of the zoos we went to study is the Houston Zoo. Which is a fifty five acre zoo, and then someone who has been to over two hundred and fifty zoos. I will tell you, it's the best zoo in sixty acres of the United States, attracting two and a half million visitors. Per year and active in a bunch of conservation programs, world class habitats for gorillas, new pontonale exhibit. So and we looked at the Fresno Zoo, which is about a forty five acre zoo. So we feel based on best practices. We can create a great zoo on the space that's provided.
Next question, I just to reiterate, this one's asking about, is it official that Elk Grove is getting a zoo? I think Jason Bearman covered this really well. This is a step in the process. There's still a lot of milestones and procedures and components to go through, so lots still to come. Please stay tuned throughout the process. We've got a comment here from Rodrick about building a whole new zoo. This is building a whole new zoological park, not relocating an old zoo. And a great opportunity for the entire region. Seven thumbs up on that. Thank you, Rodrick, for that comment. Also from Jesse, very excited for this new zoo with three thumbs up. Thank you for that. Next question is from David. Any of the species that people most want to see return to Sacramento is elephants, or one of the most, one of the species people most want to see return is elephants. Can you please explain why this might not be possible if elephants are not part of the plans? Maybe Jason again?
Yeah. So elephants are highly social species, and we want to look at best practices. And wellness for animals. And the trend for elephants in zoos is large, multi generational herds, which take up a lot of resources. We're not looking at elephants, but we're looking at having other big gray stuff, for instance, hippopotamus and rhinoceros and tall. Blondes like giraffes. And from a conservation standpoint, rhinoceroses need a lot more help than elephants do, and we are better prepared. than elephants do, and we are better prepared and able to make a difference for rhinoceroses than we would be for elephants. There are not elephants available at this time for US zoos. That is another reason why we are not looking at elephants.
Next question is from Liz about classical way being a residential street. I'll take this one. On the east side of Lots Parkway, it is designed as a residential street. We are currently going through an analysis for what that street or whatever it may be named on the west side of Lots Parkway would need to be. Given that this site or this project would facilitate a great number of visitors to it, we'd obviously not be looking at designing it as a residential street. They would need to have a higher classification and additional lane configuration. So that's something we'll be studying more as we get deeper into the design and into the environmental analysis. So yes, are looking at that. Next one's from Steven about parking. Would it be free? As a resident right next door to the proposed zoo, I'd want to make sure zoo visitors don't opt to park and resident in the residential neighborhood. Jason Bearman mentioned a little bit ago about parking revenue as an opportunity to help finance the zoo. So certainly we're looking at that. Maybe Mr. Biddle, if you want to talk a little bit about how parking operations occur at some other zoos around the country, particularly in these urban and even residential context.
I, I would just say that, you know, that we've programmed this for 10 acres of parking, which given the turn, the stay time and the, and the turns that we see and the turnover in the visitor side, the 10 acres will be enough to support that million one baseline. In addition, I think we will anticipate that given that there's at least 30 other acres adjacent to the site, that there'll be some spillover lots for, for peak days, because we will have some peak days that can account for those overflow capacity. I don't anticipate them being many at this point, but I, I think that's again, to be programmed into the use of the beyond the 70 acres, but there will be some overflow lots that will be created. And in some cases, if you have to, you know, you have a big overflow lot potentially at the casino that we can just link through some sort of shuttle service if needed, but you have lots of options that are available so that people do not park in the residential area.
Christopher, I'll just add to that. I think Rick is right. I think one of our things that we are really sensitive to, we focused on is mitigating impacts to the neighborhoods adjacent to the zoo. And there are strategies that can be employed. They're employed all over the place where you have a large facility that's somewhat near residential neighborhoods, making sure that people don't park in those neighborhoods. And so we'll look at those mitigation strategies going forward, but those have proven to be very effective in other areas. And I'm, I'm quite confident that we'll be able to mitigate that here in Elk Grove.
So the next question is from Jennifer regarding funding. Will the city of Elk Grove be coming out of pocket for the new zoo? And I think Jason Bearman went through this a little bit. Jason, is there anything you want to add or highlight regarding the funding components?
No, I think we covered that. If there's any, anything more specific that anybody has, I'm happy to answer that.
Next question, will there eventually be an opportunity to partner with Elk Grove Unified School District and or Los Rios Community College to provide internships to work at the zoo and learn about careers in zoology and related fields? Jason Jacobs, can you talk about those opportunities and maybe what you guys currently do at the zoo?
Absolutely. We have partnerships and we have a very comprehensive education program, but a larger site will enable us to do more. And, and really not just internships, but also first, first jobs for a lot of young people who are in high school or just starting off. Lot of STEM education opportunities to really have some unique learning like at the tented camp, for instance, there could be a whole component about telemetry, how we study animals in the wild. So lots of opportunities there. And we look forward to, to doing that.
Next question, or actually it's a comment comes from Lee. California needs a truly state of the art conservation focused zoo. Elk Grove could do it. 10 thumbs up on that. Thank you for that, Lee. Next question's from Robert. The map location shows several open space parcels adjacent to the location. What are the possibilities of growing that space to include a park and other attractions similar to San Diego Zoo? I will say that on the exhibit you saw a little bit ago with the green highlighted areas, many of those were drainage facilities. So there's a lot of drainage retention and management programs that occur out there as part of the future development. So those would not really be development or secondary use opportunities. We keep those first and foremost for stormwater detention and management. But certainly on the, to the west of the zoo site, there could be opportunities for doing that. We are looking as part of our camera road urban design study project. The opportunities for modifying some of the land uses down there, the future land plan for it to create more urban opportunities. And certainly we're looking at what open space and plazas and, and other amenity pieces would occur as part of that. So lots still to come down the road. Next question's from Randy. What monies could we expect from the city of Sacramento? And I'm not sure which Jason would probably be a good one to take this exactly. I don't think we've heard anything specifically, correct?
That's, that's correct. We have not built in or anticipated any financial contribution from the city of Sacramento.
Our next question again is about traffic. So we do traffic modeling. We do a lot of traffic forecasting to understand the impacts and manage those and make sure our roadways are designed appropriately. That modeling work will include the casino operations as part of it. So Pam, thank you for that question. Next one from Evan, will light rail come to the zoo with a new line? I will go and take this one. We are reserving right away for future extension of light rail or some other form of fixed transit through the city. Generally, it would follow along the Big Horn corridor. And you get down towards this area, we are reserving as part of the future land planning for extending that from Big Horn to the east towards Lots Parkway. So there could very well be an opportunity if funding is ever available in order to establish potentially a station within walking distance of the zoo entrance. But that is many years off and a lot of unknowns as part of that, but definitely something we're planning the flexibility for. Next question's from Martin. Although we are in the midst of a severe drought, what is the approach for flood mitigation? What level of flood zone does this property lie in? Again, this is all in a very open area, historical agricultural operations. So we are designing the flood control systems from, from day one with the anticipated urban uses that are in development out there that are being forecasted. So we're making sure that there are drainage facilities, that the channels and corridors that will carry that storm water out towards the Stone Lake National Wildlife Refuge and the Sacramento River are appropriately sized. The goal is that everything outside of those drainage facilities would be outside of both the 100 and 200 year floodplain levels, which are key, key indicators, key strategies, the programs, policies for the city. Next one's from Marcus. Will the name remain as Sacramento Zoo? And maybe Jason Jacobs or Rick Biddle can take this one.
We don't have a name yet. We just know this is the new zoo and we want to create the best news we can for this entire region.
Next question's from Kevin. How long would it take to build the zoo from day one of breaking ground? So how many months of construction schedule would be looking at? Maybe Rick Biddle, you can answer that one. Once a shovel hits the ground, how long for phase one theoretically till opening day?
CJ, I think is a great question. And before I think we get people's hopes up, I'd rather not give a specific answer. I mean, I think Jason covered it earlier is that it's going to be done in a very thoughtful way. There's a lot of, of due diligence on, in engaging the community on creating a design. And eventually there will be a timeline that will get developed, but this is an exciting time for the, the zoo. And I'd rather not focus on months or and give people an expectation that today we just don't know about because we haven't created that design just yet, but be patient, be excited, and we'll look for having this conversation in the coming months. That's for sure.
Our next couple are comments. I'll go ahead and read those. Andy says, I grew up in Sacramento. My parents took us to the Sacramento Zoo and Fairy Tale Town every year. My kids and granddaughter have been many times, but the facility needs this modernization to happen. Sacramento is really lacking family friendly venues, spot on by the finance guy. Thank you, Andy. Our next one's from Arthur. I'm happy to support the Sacramento Zoo coming to Elk Grove. I look forward to participating in the effort. Thank you, Arthur. Our next one's a question about the operation of the facility if it's built. And I think this one's probably for both the Jasons. The Sacramento Zoological Society currently operates and maintains the Sacramento Zoo. Will they continue to do this with the new zoo or will the city of Elk Grove have operating control? And actually, we're joined by Elizabeth Stollard, who is the board president for the Sacramento Zoological Society. So seems like maybe she wants to take this one, Elizabeth.
Oh, well, I actually, I was just getting ready for the next question, but I'm certainly happy to, to speak up. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and for sharing our excitement about this incredible project. I will say, and I'm certainly happy to have Elk Grove jump, jump into this conversation as well. But our expectation is that the society would operate the, the new zoo much the way we, we currently operate the zoo in Sacramento and that the society is in charge of operations on a daily basis.
Yes, I, I agree with what Liz just said.
So then our next question from Michael, what legal authority does the Sacramento Zoological Society have to relocate the zoo out of Sacramento into other cities? Isn't the agreement between the city of Sacramento and Sacramento Zoological Society for the benefit of the city of Sacramento? How is moving the zoo out of Sacramento into Elk Grove benefiting the city of Sacramento? Wouldn't that be a breach of the contract? So Liz?
Thank you again. I, I will say, so for those of you who don't know, I am actually an attorney in my other world, but I will give you an answer as a non-attorney, which is that the Sacramento Zoological Society has been operating the current land park site pursuant to a contract we have with the city of Sacramento for that purpose. Our, our expectation is that we will enter into a similar contract, the society with the city of Elk Grove in the event that we, we are able to build this new zoo down in Elk Grove and that we would continue to have that relationship as an operator for the zoo site. With respect to the city of Sacramento, they have been incredible partners. Obviously, we, we have been very proud to operate the zoo in Sacramento, and we're optimistic that we would be able to work with the city of Sacramento and that they would work with us in the city of Elk Grove in allowing for a, a smooth transition to benefit this entire region by building a new and incredible zoo on the new site.
And Michael had a follow-up question. I think Elk Grove is doing the right thing by Elk Grove, and no one can blame them for that. But why take Sacramento Zoo? Can't Elk Grove build a zoo without having to take that step?
And again, I think it's probably an issue with context. We aren't taking Sacramento Zoo. We have known, the city of Sacramento has known, and I think plenty of you in the community have known for some time that we, we simply can't continue to maintain the, the kind of care we want to provide, the kind of experience we want to provide to the public at the current site. So the reality is that, that the zoo needs a new and larger location, and that is how the zoo has a future. We're not taking anything away from Sacramento. We're making sure that this region continues to have an incredible zoo for the next hundred years.
Next question from Ronald asks, is the zoo going to be located on the south side of Camera Road? No, the site that we've identified as the potential development location is on the north side of Camera Road, immediately west of Lots Parkway. And it will be south of the drainage channel that's currently being constructed as part of the subdivision on the north side of the channel. So certainly you can drive out there today and take a look at it. If you go out either Camera Road and then turn north on Lots Parkway or coming over from Promenade Parkway, go out on Bilby and you'll eventually tee into it at a future signalized intersection. It's partially constructed. Next question, will the, what will the current zoo site be replaced with? Jason or Liz, if you want to field that one?
That, that is to be determined by the city of Sacramento.
Next one, asking about the particular focus areas that are identified in the feasibility study. Can you talk about why Africa, Asia, Australia were chosen? But not other reasons or other regions like South America?
Well, when you read the report, you're going to see a variety of South American species integrated throughout the entire facility. For instance, Caribbean flamingos, rosiets, spoonbills, squirrel monkeys, sloth, poison dart frog. And, and the final design is not complete. When the document says six acres for gray apes, well, there might be other primates from South America in there too. We don't know yet. But certainly when you read the report, you'll see a plenty of South American species integrated into the existing documents.
Next question, will energy efficiency measures be incorporated as much as possible and/or are there plans to utilize renewable energy for the zoo's energy needs? Jason or Rick, if you want to take that one?
Well, so zoos are all about sustainability and it's actually required in our AZA accreditation. And that's another reason why we need a new facility. Our infrastructure is crumbling at the current site. It's between 70 and 90 years old, some of it. And so we want to be sustainable. We want to be a conservation organization. And a new zoo would be built with that technology to help us be the best conservation organization we can.
The next question, how does having a zoo in a neighborhood impact residential housing prices? I don't know that any of us have the information tonight, but that could be something we look into in the future. So we would need to follow up on that. Next question from Jennifer, would love to see the zoo here. I think it's a great opportunity for Elk Grove in the region and the species of animals we are working to conserve. Thank you for the comment, Jennifer. Next one's from Walt. Do you anticipate parking to be a multi-level structure or ground-based? How many cars would 10 acres handle at peak if not a structure? Maybe Rick, you can take that one?
Sure. It is a surface lot that's being proposed. And for every acre, you can park 125 cars with divides and walkways in it. So you can park approximately 1,250 cars on 10 acres. And what we've, as you'll see in the report, we looked at visitor stay time and turnover and all those lots to figure out the amount of spaces that we need overall to support a 1.2 opening and a 1.1 million visitor baseline.
Our next question, can this be family friendly? No beer or alcohol? Or maybe Jason or Rick, you want to talk about how you program concessions at the facility?
Well, there's many zoos, including the current Sacramento Zoo that serve beer and alcohol. And in all my years of going to zoos, people do not go to the zoo to get inebriated. If you're walking around a large zoo, a cool drink on a hot day, people look for places to relax and the zoo is one of them. And that would certainly affect a potential concessionaire's contract too. So we're not in a position to say we can or we can't, but I can just tell you that many zoos serve alcohol, beer and wine and other drinks.
Next question from Nick. It seems like a great opportunity to feature botany flora. Also sort of related, did I hear one of the phases may also include an aviary? Jason?
Yes. When you look at the reports, you're going to see there's a lot of birds and aviaries throughout the project. Almost every phase has an avian component. And we look forward to having a lot of feathered creatures in, in the new facility.
Another comment from Frederick about creating technology or incorporating technology as part of a state of the art facility. Love that comment. Thank you for that. Will ask, what is your estimated timeframe for the MOU first phase, second phase? Love this proposal. We can go back to the slide if you'd like, but we are anticipating having the MOU prepared that outlines what the phases are, are would be in more detail, what the design process looks like and the schedule for that, working on that over the next few weeks. It's not something we will have for the 23rd. There's still, we want to get direction from the council first before doing that. So we'll be able to give more of that timeframe information in the coming weeks if this moves forward. Suggestion from Frederick, maybe keep it simple, call it the new zoo. I think we actually do that in the reports that'll be posted. It's something along those lines. So appreciate that. Next question, one of my favorite areas at the San Diego Zoo was the walk in aviary. Any plans on something like that being built? Jason or Rick?
Well, in the report you're going to read about the potential of a walk-through aviary where the flamingos would be in there with species like rosiets, film bills, perhaps scarlet ivy's or pendulas, conyers, and lots of other waterfowl from South America. So that's, there's also later on in the report, I believe, something about a walk-through aviary with lorkeets that you could feed. So yes, we're looking at a whole host of potential interactive aviaries potentially in the design.
So we're down to our last two questions. So if you have any others, please type them in now so we can make sure to get to you before the end of the evening. Next one's from Jesse. Did the feasibility study look into potential expansion areas for the new zoo? Is expansion a possibility with this site? Maybe Rick Biddle, you can talk a little bit about. Maybe Rick Biddle, you can talk a little bit about the 60 acres and the feasibility there?
Yeah, and the answer is no, we think that the 60, based upon the vision that's been created. For this new zoo, we, we think the 60 acres is more than adequate to support not only the zoo. In the short term, but in the long term and, and so we think the 60 acres, this one time maybe size really doesn't matter. It's really how you program that visit and how you program it from a day night. And from a guest engagement visitor experience side, so. We, we think the 60 plus the 10 for parking will, will support the zoo for many years to come. And allow it to be very, very viable and sustainable going forward.
Next question from Evan, can I request a parking garage? I will say parking garages are extremely expensive and not something placed in the budget at this point, but Rick, do you want to elaborate at all on that?
Yeah, I mean, usually it has to deal with a number of issues, including, you know, sightlines with a parking garage. That's obviously a higher structure, but to build a parking garage. I'm not sure in California, I haven't figured it out in California real fast, but typically it's about $20,000 a square of parking space. And surface lots much cheaper and it's much easier to manage, so. This is, given that if we get pressed on land, maybe size, but I, I think the surface lot would be the preferred way to. To manage the current visitation.
A number more questions came in, so we'll keep going. Robert asks, should this go forward? Does anyone know what the plan is to phase out the old location? And if it would be used for something else or become park space? Maybe Jason, you can talk about the process you would go through for onboarding the new facility.
Well, we really don't have the design yet, but obviously. There's a lot that has a lot of components to opening a new zoological park. And you have to transfer animals, you have to get them used to new habitats, shifting in and out. So there's just a lot of unknown right now. So we intend to keep the zoo open as long as we can. And we intend if this project should go forward to open that as soon as we can. But some of that schedule will be on animals and we really don't know yet. This is just an important first step in this, in this process.
So the next one's a combination comment and question, please don't forget the arts. Artners on profit would love to paint some beautiful murals, nature, animals, et cetera. So certainly the city has a public art component for its capital projects and I think we'd be looking at those opportunities. As part of the design for the new facility, I don't, Jason or Rick, if you want to strap it on that anymore?
Well, you know, in, in a lot of zoos, if there's indoor exhibits, they have mural artists paint the backgrounds. If you go to many reptile houses, for instance, so. By all means, we'll look at that as, as a component when we start designing.
Yeah, I'd say CJ, again, it's one of those opportunities that you talked earlier, someone talked earlier about partnerships. I think you can create a number, that's another example of a partnership that we didn't discuss before, but. You know, could be a very unique partnership between the community, arts community in the zoo.
So the next question from Emily, were other sites in Elk Grove considered for this project? And I think Daryl Don actually can help out with this one a little bit in talking about the. Stable of sites available, if you will, and, and thoughts around some of our land use planning. But I will generally say that on the whole, there are not a lot of 60 or 100 acre sites really available in the city for a project like this.
Yeah, that's correct CJ. We did look at alternative sites and. When you just look at the geography of Elk Grove, you know, the majority of the city is either built or part of our rural area. And in the built area, there are not many sites of more than five to 10 acres. So that kind of naturally leads us to this, what we call the southeast policy area. We don't think this fits in an industrial context and we don't have much of that land either. So we kind of get into this area where we're in, right, north of Camera, south of, say, White Lock. West of 99 and east of Stone Lake, so that's kind of where this landed. There are, you know, multiple large tracks there, and so what we looked at. In trying to cite this was the right mix of, you know, zoning. Land use appropriateness of the type of use, given the surrounding context, and then availability and price of the land. And this is the site that made the most sense for us, and I think we were. You know, we were fortunate to be able to acquire it when we did at the price we did.
Daryl, so the next one is a suggestion from Nick, has someone contacted Netflix about a documentary of this whole unique once in a lifetime process? Because it's not something I've thought about.
We're, we are in contact with Netflix already. I have some contacts with producers, several companies have reached out regarding documenting this and making it into a series. They just want to know when it starts, they, they want the construction, they want the animal moves. So as we update our timelines, I'll be updating those producers down in Southern California.
Next one's a question, in keeping with STEM and Elk Grove history of agriculture, have you considered the possibility of adding a 4H component? With the new zoo, there are a few 4H clubs in the area. Jason or Rick?
Well. I think there is a distinct possibility that if there are young students who want hands-on experience, taking care of animals. We can come up with a program. That's similar to 4H, but we're not going to take our rhinos to the state fair and sell them, right? This is a zoo that is going to be working with several really rare and endangered species. And we want to make it interactive and certainly there are going to be habitats and opportunities. For volunteer work and for potentially hands-on, so as we get further into design process, we'll, we'll look at that. But, but right now, you know, I can't give a clear answer.
Next one's a suggestion from Marcus. Would, how does the name Elk Grove Regional Zoo sound and enjoy the evening? Thank you for that suggestion, Marcus. Next one's a seconding of the idea from Nick about the documentary, thank you for that, Pat. Marie asked, how many tent cabins do you envision? I think that's really undetermined at this point because we haven't gotten to the real meat and potatoes of the design yet. It's really just that bubble diagram, so something to continue working out in the next series of phases. Thanks, Marie, for that. Michael again with a question on the agreement, was the agreement between the city of Sacramento and the Zoological Society for the benefit of the city of Sacramento? I'm an attorney as well, the answer to my question appeared to be. The Sacramento Zoological Society had an agreement with Sacramento and now wants one with Elk Grove. If the agreement was for the benefit of Sacramento, would that not be a breach? Why would Elk Grove want to go into business with the Sacramento Zoological Society if they just breached the contract with Sacramento? This might be a pretty detailed question and answer for this evening. This might be something we need to follow up more on and provide more clarity, but maybe Liz, if you want to tackle that one again.
Sure, I'm happy to, to the extent I can, I'll first say. Michael, if, if you want to talk about this further, I'm absolutely happy to chat with you about it. But just for the benefit of everyone else who's here tonight and hearing your question. I, I think again, your, your question is based on a false assumption. There is no breach of an agreement, the, the city of Sacramento operated the Sacramento Zoo. For approximately 60 some odd years. And the, the zoo's accreditation was in jeopardy because of the, the current management of the zoo. And that's when the Sacramento Zoological Society agreed to take over the operations and entered into the agreement to do so. So it, it's not, this notion of benefit isn't really applicable to the, the dynamic between the, the contracting parties. There is an operator and then there is the owner of the facility. And so the same structure would apply here in Elk Grove, there would be an operator and an owner of the facility. And so again, this notion of breach and all of that just really isn't applicable. But again, of course, we're looking for the best possible transition as we move. You know, forward with not only making sure that we continue to operate the current land park site as best we can. In mindful of, of the needs of, of the new zoo, but also working with our partner, the city of Sacramento. And our, our new and current partner, the city of Elk Grove, hopefully. And making sure that that's as seamless of a transition as possible for the community as well as for the animals.
Next question's back on to the tent cabins and pricing of those, and I don't think we have any information on that necessarily, but. I know there are some light items in the pro forma about that, so maybe Rick, if you can just talk broadly about some of those assumptions in the pro forma?
Sure, I, I don't think that there's a detailed, CJ, as you said, there's a, there's not a detail on that aspect of it, so. You know, we're, we're not even sure exactly where they're going to be cited, but once they do, I, I think it's not a large number of, of, because there's an exclusive. You know, you want this unique opportunity to experience the, the new zoo and so it's done in a very intimate way. You know, if I had to pick a number, it's probably, you know, somewhere between eight to 12 sort of thing, but. It's not a big number at this point from our initial thinking, but they'll get developed as the concept gets developed moving forward.
And then pricing on that is something to be determined, right?
If, correct, right.
Next question's about the parking, with a 10 acre surface parking lot, would shuttles be considered being put into place? I don't think that's part of the vision, right, Rick?
Yeah, I think again, I, I, shuttles could be put in place only on overflow days and. But the 12, the 10 acres that are programmed will more than support the, the baseline visitation. And yes, you will have some peak days where the weather is beautiful, there might be a new exhibit opening, but. As we've discussed earlier, we'll, we'll provide means of, I anticipate the zoo providing means of having overflow opportunities and. And supporting the, the really high quality guest experience.
And I'll also say from a scale perspective, 10 acres is about the size of most elementary schools in Elk Grove. So to give you a sense of what that looks like and what the walkability would be for, for the parking lot. Comment here from Renee, many zoos have saved species from extinction, thank you for offering this wildlife protection organization. Thank you for that, Renee. An offer here to facilitate and help with the Netflix component from Frederick, thank you for that. Owen asks, are you planning to have a safari cart tram around the zoo considering the size of the facility? Jason or Rick?
We, we haven't looked into that yet. It's, it's certainly a much larger campus than what we have now. And really the final design will, will tell us whether we need it.
Evan asks, will there be non-exotic animals like farm animals? I think we had that question with the 4H one a little bit ago, but if there's anything you want to add, Jason?
Well, you know, a lot of animals that we look at as exotic are actually farm animals in other parts of the world. Like dromedary camels, those are, those are farm animals. Water buffalo are farm animals, alpacas are farm animals as are llamas, right? So it's, it's all in how you look at that and. You know, we, we don't know yet, right, but certainly there's already a children's petting zoo inland park, Fairy Tale Town. So that's already existing in this region, but we really don't know yet.
Suggestion here from Mike on naming the facility capital regional zoo, thank you for that, Mike. The last two questions, I think, actually dovetail really nicely together, so I'm going to ask them or present them as a package. And I think Jason Bearman is probably the best one to address these. Is there anything that can prevent the project from happening? What sort of examples there? And will the March 23rd meeting finalize the decision whether the zoo will move to Elk Grove? Jason Bearman?
Sure, happy to answer those questions, I'll take the, the first one. The easy answer is, is yes, there are certainly things that could. Get in the way of the zoo from moving forward, again, there are a lot of decisions that need to be made along the way, so at any point. The city and the zoo could decide not to move forward for a variety of reasons. Things that, that could happen or could get in the way of that project is any things that might come through the environmental impact study. The ability or inability to successfully fundraise, the capital campaign is going to be critical for the success of this project. So a lot of this effort moving forward is going to be contingent on the success of that capital campaign. So there are, there are other things that could take place along the way that would make it so this isn't, this doesn't move forward. At this point, we're, we're focused on kind of, you know, digesting that feasibility study, engaging with the community. Bringing items forward to our city council, continuing the partnership with the Zoological Society. And then, and then take, making those decisions along the way and do our best to keep that process moving. As far as the meeting of March 23rd, whether that's the final decision. No, that would be another important milestone where the council will get the official kind of presentation of this information. And they will give us either the green light to move forward with developing an agreement or an M O U with the zoo. That would outline different responsibilities, the next steps relating to design and financing and so forth. And then along that, again, there will be other steps after and other decisions that need to be made before final project approval. But the meeting on the 23rd will be an important milestone in that process.
Thanks, Jason, so that concludes the questions that we have teed up this evening. Just want to thank everybody for joining us and participating in today's webinar. Learning more about the project and seeing where we are in the feasibility process. Again, you can go to the website beginning later this evening and take a look at the documents, elkgrovecity.org/zoo. If you haven't already, please sign up for the email list so you can get regular updates from our team. About where we are and what's happening and what milestones are coming up. That'll be important as we move forward with this project potentially in the future. So again, thank you all very much, we appreciate your time this evening and look forward to hearing from you all in the future. Take care and have a great rest of your evening.